And that way we can try to get those questions answered. We are learning about this. Some of us know something about it, but some of us know nothing about it. So we're all at different levels. We have subject matter experts from, you know, the creme de la creme, all the way to the other creme de la creme in different ways of doing destination management organizations. We are not making any decision tonight. We need to hear what we need to hear and bull it over in our brains and figure out what we heard. And then we're going to have a discussion and we want people to be a part of that when we get to that part. But we're here to listen and to try to understand what it is that we might want to do. So I hope that that is okay. The thing I like about the fact that we're all going to be here in the same thing is that we're all going to start at the same point, at least in this process. So I'd like to turn it over to our city manager for the intro. Does anybody need the hearing thingies? Whatever, what is it? Do we call our hearing?
Assisted listening devices?
Assisted listening, yes. Well, I have this thing right in front of me. If I get any closer, it's going to be feedback.
So you can get closer. I can turn in the volume down a little bit.
Oh, my God, yeah. So we will do our very best to speak up. Staff, would you help us if you see somebody who is not hearing or there's having difficulty? Just, you know, get somebody, get my attention so that we can adjust as we need to go. We don't want anybody to miss out because this is bad news information. Yeah, let's just go right into that. Yeah, we're going to adjust our agenda. So let's quickly do the roll call just for the record and then we'll go into staff report.
Commissioner Adam Marle.
Here.
Commissioner Rocky Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Mike Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Frank O'Donnell.
Here.
And Mayor Denise McGriff.
Here.
So the first item tonight, good evening commissioners, mayor, is developing a destination market management organization in Oregon City. So we have a staff report as well as we've invited a couple of guests here tonight. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Graham to give the staff report intro and help facilitate this discussion.
Thank you. Good evening commissioners and happy new year. We are about to embark on something very special for Oregon City. And of course, that encompasses a new direction for tourism. We, tonight, we have three subject experts on the matter. Each, and each of them are DMOs. They're shades of DMOs. There are some that are more DMO than others. But you'll be able to hear and also have a discussion with the various different types that are here with us today. Two of them are online and one is in this chamber with us. But so first, I'd like to start with Jeff Knapp. And Mr. Knapp is the executive director of Visit McMinnville. And that is a, and he is a DMO. And he, this organization has been around for quite a while. We want to thank him for taking the time to be with us. And I will turn it over to him and he will have his opening remarks. And then I, we'll probably have some questions of him. And then we'll go to the next one and I'll announce who that would be.
Before he gets started, is he on?
Yes, he's here.
Okay, are we going to see his person? Is he going to be there? Oh, there you are. Okay, well, let me just real quick before you do introduce. Samara, do you want to just come up now? That way you have a seat at the table and then you might have some pointed questions too. It is you, Jeff. Hi, everyone. I'm Samara.
Good surprise. What a surprise.
So did you hear our introduction of the roll call? Or should we just introduce ourselves to you again?
I did not. I was kind of on a part of a roll call, but I'm excited and happy to be here. I would love to have you introduce yourselves, but that's fine.
All right, we'll start with Commissioner Mitchell.
Mike Mitchell. Good evening, Adam Marle.
Good evening, I'm Frank O'Donnell.
Rocky Smith.
And hi, I'm Denise McGriff. And next to me is our city manager, Tony Conkle. And obviously you've talked to James Graham, our development manager.
So go ahead.
Thank you all for having me. It's an honor. I apologize for my voice. It had been sick for the last couple of weeks. So if you can't understand me, please raise a hand or interrupt me. I'll do my best. My name is Jeff Knapp. I am the president and CO of Visit McMinnville. We are a destination management, moving towards destination stewardship organization. Semantics, words. I tip my hat to you for moving this conversation forward in your community. I know these types of conversations are open up all sorts of different opportunities in the community and they're not easy things to lift. And I've been through those with my community and we were a DMO that just, we started eight years ago. So, and we've had a lot of success with the model that we activated. I can speak for us. I know there are lots of different people operating, some as chambers, some as nonprofits, some municipally. But we found this model to work very well for our community. I'll give you a little background on McMinnville. Like I said, 2015, I was hired to start step, take the, take the ball and run with, after a process much like what it sounds like you're going through, our group of citizens in our city got together. And at the time, we did not have a lodging tax. And they said, you know, I think there's a, some resources here that could benefit both the community and local business and we should go through this process. And in doing so, they went and talked to different groups around the state as well. They were very impressed with a model that was coming out of Bend. So they ended up being impressed with that, contracting with their director. At the time, his name was Doug Lplaka. He came and worked with the city for a year as a contractor to just kind of say like, here's how things, in his opinion, should work. And that would make it the easiest to avoid pitfalls. We took that model at the base level strategically changed it up. Once I took the helm and we've been hit the ground running building since 2015. So we started off with annual, our, we passed a transient lodging tax of eight point, or I think it was eight percent. Our annual budget was probably right around $400,000, $500,000 a year. Our city has a 70/30 split. Seventy, 70% goes to the tourism related funding of our organization. We stood up a 501(c)(6), which is what we are. We're a board driven organization, 501(c)(6). We have a board of local, very involved stakeholders with a variety of business acumen, predominantly focused on visitor tourism stakeholders. But we also have ex officio seats for our mayor and our city council president, who have been right along with us since the beginning. We are deeply ingrained into our city's strategic plan. After our organization was stood up, we worked with our city to go through an economic development strategic plan because it kind of shook things up within the community as far as responsibilities with our chamber and our downtown association. So we worked with that on those partnerships. Now we are executing, you know, a strategic vision very collaboratively with the city. We started off with a very, as a destination marketing organization with strict focus on marketing, which was very helpful to get us off the ground. But we have since moved towards, as our resources have grown 300%, you know, our budget has grown from $400,000 to be probably 1.4 million this year. That's, that's our budget, so the 70%. And the city's obviously grows as well. But so we're executing on a lot of different things other than marketing. Our staff has grown from two to will be, well, six this year. And we're working on outdoor recreation, arts and culture projects, hybrid tourism. We're deeply engaged in conversation around all sorts of planning efforts, urban renewal districts, et cetera. So I could get, I could go on. We work very collaboratively. I think our success is through our partnerships, both with our community and our region. So I appreciate, I'm excited to be working with you all more. I'm excited to see Samara with familiar face. She's, she knows what she's talking about. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Jeff. Just a couple of questions for you, Jeff, and then I'll open up the floor. The, you have a 501, you've established a 501(c)(6). What would you say is the advantage of that?
The advantage of 501(c)(6), I mean, for us, I think the city, it allows us to move swiftly. It allows us to be a membership based organization if we choose to. We're not officially a pure, you know, it's, we're working on half of business is how I understand it. As a C3, from my understanding, you are, you're charitable organization working towards charity. We operate more like a business, I would say strategically. We operate as an economic development organization and as a single contractor with, with the city, making it more flexible and making things, quite frankly, move quicker. Being a nonprofit, quasi judicial partner with the city. Quasi governmental, I should say, not judicial.
And my last question is, how many hotels do you have in New York City?
So we have six hotels and quite a few vacation rentals. We're growing at investment coming. We have multiple hotels on the slate to open. Really, it's land for us. Demand is high for our destination. So, yeah, we have not a lot of hotel rooms though. I mean, I think we have probably close to 400 rooms plus vacation rentals, probably 100 vacation rentals and six properties. We've had to navigate, I should, a couple of things that I've, that I did not bring up. After two years of our partnership with the city, the city saw our progress and was comfortable with the work that we were doing. We went to them, the city increased that tax to a 10%, which increased, you know, revenue, both for us and our work. And so we were able to, to increase, you know, the program was working and we've, we have held it at that for the last six years.
Jeff, thank you so much. I know I've followed a lot of events and tourism in McMinnville and see the things that McMinnville has been doing. And it sounds like there's a fair amount of similarities in some of the pieces that I see here in Oregon City. But one of the things that I really want to hear more about is the partnership between, we talked about a little bit of how the city is tied into DMO with having members, you know, kind of as a liaison to DMO. But really want to know the logistics of the overlap and the individual responsibilities between the DMO, how it works with the chamber and how it works with downtown. I think that is very much something that I want to know about how that intertwined works. We have all those places in place in Oregon City and in various years, various groups have taken on different leadership roles into tourism. So having the DMO as a, as a separate entity, how did those roles kind of get divided up? Or at least how did each individual organization see themselves in that picture and how, how they coordinate together?
It's a great question and very, an important one. You know, at the end of the day, that was, the trickiest part to standing it up was that, honestly. You know, when we were standing up a destination, then marketing organization, management, there are well established people working in these, you know, and there still are. So, you know, for me, what we did was, I, I, I made an effort intentionally to reach out to each of those directors when we began meeting monthly because our, our identities had changed a little bit. The downtown association didn't need to focus so much on marketing. You know, this isn't a blanket statement. I'm sure there's nuances for every community. So please, if there are chambers and downtown associations in the office out there, for us, we wanted to not be threat, but to work collaboratively and, and to be frank, our resources are far more, are significant and they're growing. And it's hard, chamber budgets and downtown association budgets are hard to, to, you know, and there's a lot of needs. So what, the best thing that we did was collaboratively defined our roles. We collectively got together and individually worked with our boards and said, okay, we all work on behalf of economic development for the city. What is our lane essentially? And we worked with the city to go through an economic development plan where the city prioritized, like, look, this is, these are our 12 plant things. So every time we get a new city council person or a new mayor, you know, we have something that guides us in consistency. And I think that really helped because it identified everyone sort of how they plug into the plan and where they, and where they row. Now, it takes work and it takes trust and trust takes time. So it was a lot of intention and relationship building and then that plan. As far as how that plan then, we set up something called the McMinnville Economic Vitality Advisory Committee. And basically it was a committee of local business owners that gather once a month to look at the priorities of the city and meet with each of the heads of the economic development teams and just kind of help advocate and steer the bigger plan. And that helped us a lot as a response to COVID and ARPA dollars and things like that. When we have, you've got opportunity to move on things and we've got a group set up with a plan that has some priorities. We were able to move quickly to get money and some pretty big projects growing for our third street improvement and for innovation campus. So that's a long winded talk, but at the end of the day, we've become very close partners with the city.
I would, I really appreciate what you said about, I wrote it down when you said it earlier, that you all got together to define roles. And I think that that is really key. Because I think about when I moved here many years ago, the first place I, you know, second place I went, third place I went was to the chamber. And the chamber at that time had a visitor center, which had all the information. And so we still have community members to this day who voted the chamber because that's what traditionally they think of chambers as doing. Or we have people come downtown to our downtown association, expect them to be the chamber. So I think, you know, having everybody sit down in a facilitated session to talk about roles and responsibilities is really going to go a long way towards, you use the term staying in your lane, but I think sometimes you have to, you know, in order for to have cooperation, you have to cross lanes. So I think that that's appropriate. What, what I'm still struggling with a little bit is that, even though I've looked it up, I'm still not clear about the 501(c)(6). And you got, you said you chose, you guys chose that. Are all, is the chamber a six in McMinnville? And the downtown group a six?
I believe they're both sixes, yeah. I think all of our local are all C6s.
Yeah, because obviously.
And that was a, yeah, that decision was made by our county council.
So how is that an advantage?
I think all suit with those existing certification or classifications.
So how is that an advantage being a C6?
I just think nonprofit, I think it's the applicable, the advantage, I don't know if there's an advantage. I just think it's the applicable, as I understand it, and I don't know, my colleagues here may be able to, because I've not run a 501(c)(3), but from my understanding, 501(c)(3) is a purely charitable organization. And for us, we're not purely charitable. We're here to serve business. We can even raise funds. We can go out and, you know, we can sell things. We can have memberships. We chose not to be a membership based organization. I mean, we could go out and collect dues. And I don't think you can do that as a C3, from my understanding.
I thought it was the other way around. A C3, 501(c)(3) does have their charitable membership organization. I'm in like, we're all, you and I already know a lot of them. But I know as a C6, you're not, you're not, you're not necessarily a membership organization.
Yeah, I'm sorry I can't speak, I, I would turn it over to one of my colleagues here to maybe speak to that. I can tell you that it's worked, whatever the classifications, C6 has worked very well for both us and for our city and for our city attorney. Very, very thorough process of standing it up. And then we, we've been through a single contract and renegotiated as an organization too. So we were in this process and did this with our city council and then came back and renegotiated longer terms. So they've gone through it with a fine tooth comb and I'd be happy to connect you with our city manager about that particular question.
Before you go on, so I can hear, because of our great system here, I can hear all the little whispering and the little stuff. So that's not helping in terms of being able to hear.
Well, somewhere in this lengthy series of reports, it actually talks about the difference between a 501(c)(3) and a 501(c)(6). And as soon as I read it, in my mind, the C6 was the better fit for what we wanted to do. It's, it's just targeted at exactly what we want to do. When I look at, I guess my questions to you are a series of them. One of them is, in the early, early days of your organization, how did you accomplish the initial growth? Because I think our efforts to date within, within the city structure, I've been trying to do all things to all people every day of the year. And I wondered if we shouldn't be focusing more on my special events initially. So did, how did you grow initially when you were just terminating as a C?
Well, I can't, I'll tell you how we did it and I wouldn't say that that's, I would say the key is focus. You're right, I don't know the strategy or I wouldn't know what to recommend for your particular city. But for us, it was awareness, you know, to drive awareness of our, our town as a destination. And so we focused with laser like focus on visiting messaging just through marketing. And marketing is the, oftentimes the scariest thing for cities or for people. It's the first thing to get cut because, you know, measuring that, how do you measure the, what are the, what are your KPIs on that? And so we found, we, we set up some measurable and we set this whole thing up to become just like a, you know, world class marketing and PR organization that served us well to a point. And then we needed to shift our strategy and start to diversify because it was not, you know, there's, there's more to it. But for us, that was it. We, we, we didn't issue grants. We didn't host events. We didn't, you know, we marketed and had PR and that was the best strategy for us. And then from there, after I would say about five years, we, we added a whole nother layer to our, our work and through the relationships that we had built, we started working on development projects for the community.
So how did you bring your marketable assets into alignment? For us, we've got private sector, we have public sector, we have charitable organizations. How were you able to consolidate them to make a cohesive offering to the public to attract them, aim of tourism?
Well, we, we did some strategic planning with our board and, you know, yeah, looked at our, our draws and our assets and how that fit within the greater plan of the city. And the board directed, you know, that, that was my job. They, that's what they hired me to do is to figure that out. So that's what, how did we do it? It was data driven decisions. It was a strategic analysis of our, you know, our attractors. It is market assessment. It's what is our, is our unique position? Where are we competitive? What type of traveler do we have currently? What do we not have? When are they coming? What, you know, are we poised to be a leisure destination or a business destination? Or, you know, it's a, it's a, it was a lot of data and a lot of strategic planning.
So initially, in the formation of your organization, you transitioned from something driven by a city staff, tourism, economic development type thing or nothing whatsoever?
There was no effort. So we had no transient lodging tax. There was, the city was late to the game with that. So we didn't have a tax pass until 2013. So there was no, it was, we came on as a brand new organization trying to fill the niche and to help the city reach, the city and local businesses reach their goals together. So to that end, we were a brand new team member.
So prior to your organization, there was no department within the city that was taking care of tourism or?
No, no, the city has no internal economic development at all in McMinnville, so it's all through partnerships. So we're moving, I think, in that direction, honestly. Strategically, I can't, I, I hope that happens. And we haven't, but we're doing it all partnership wise through committees and through nonprofits like, like ours.
I won't go further. I was, Rocky Smith actually covered something for me, which is what are your partnerships with existing organizations? And how are they managed? And I think you've answered that. It's almost my assignment within your organization.
Adam, you have a question?
A couple of mine have already been answered, but I would prefer to hear from the other speakers first.
I just want to make sure I understood what you said, that the entire economic development effort in McMinnville flows through your organization and not through the city?
No, it's, so what we call, we've still have something that I, we call internally the stable table. And the stable table, we have four legs of the table. The tabletop is the city. They're the economic development partner at the top level. But we have our chamber, our downtown association as a leg, our, our organization, and then something called the McMinnville Economic Development Partnership. So they are all board driven nonprofits with different revenue streams and different lanes or purviews. But at the end of the day, we all tie together to help support the city's economic development plan. So we act as advise, advisors to council. And we also work as staff for a larger group of people that we've, basically when the plan, we, we got the city to make this plan. And then we don't want it to sit on the shelf. So there's another group that oversees sort of just making recommendations on the city's, you know, priorities.
Okay, thank you.
I know we need to move to, but you asked something that I didn't think was, so you said, Jeff, that when you started, it was all about marketing. So what was it that you were marketing? Not, I'm trying, you know, Frank asked about.
What assets did you have?
Yeah, he talked about, should we just do events? Well, that's been part of the problem that we.
Yeah.
So what was, what was the marketing effort towards when the DMO started? Because you said it was mostly that to begin with.
Yeah, so, you know, I think we, for us, it was easy to lean into wine country, you know? We've got 200 wineries within 20 miles of here. So we leaned into that as our, our, our low hanging fruit, no pun intended. And that's what we, we started with. And then as we built out and knew, changed the, those messages, you know, we targeted families and targeted different types of travelers. We market in many different ways. We are a pretty, we are fairly, purely leisure destination. We don't have a lot of business travel. So we're looking to expand that business and conference travel, for instance, or sports travel. Like, we don't have a lot of, we have a little bit, but we're looking at ways that we can build out and support, you know, large sporting events.
Winning Lenfield University teams doing pretty well.
Thank you.
Yeah, so let's go to the next one.
So Mayor, if I could, thank you, Jeff. Our next guest, expert guest is Mark Artnett. And he is with, he's the Public and Government Affairs Director. And they have something called, I think it's Wilsonville.com. And so you've brand named that. And he also, they've also registered with the Secretary of State that name. So welcome, Mark, and thank you for being here.
Thank you, my pleasure.
Hey, Mark.
So go ahead. Good evening, Mayor McGriff.
So go ahead and explain the structure and what have you about with regard to Wilsonville.
Sure. I've been with the city for 15 years. However, I was formerly the executive director of the Wilsonville Chamber of Commerce, a 501(c)(6) organization, which frankly, most chambers and visitors associations are 501(c)(6)'s. That allows them to have a federal tax exemption. However, donations or funds are, that are, individuals do not get a tax write off, unlike they do with a 501(c)(3). After I joined the city, we also, as similar to Oregon City, had been running a regional visitor information center, both Katniss County and Oregon's Monmouth Territory. And the city came to the conclusion that the visitor center was, model was no longer desirable due to changes in demographics and traffic to visitor centers and decided to go with a more of an online. a more of an online marketing strategy. So the city had to, you know, we're, all cities are preempted by state law to spend a certain percentage of their TLT, transient lodging tax, on tourism. Jeff noted that McMinnville does 70%. That's the current amount. So if you were to enact a new tourism tax, you would have to dedicate 70% to tourism promotion. That percentage has changed over time. When the city started our TLT taxation, oh, 20 more years ago, our city attorney believes that we have to spend at least 35% of our TLT on tourism promotion, and that's through state law. The, the city had an advantage over the years where the Clackamas County Cultural Affairs, Tourism and Cultural Affairs, Doing Businesses, Oregon's Mottah Territory, had helped many of the Clackamas County cities develop what were called visitor destination action plans. And this ran for at least a 10-year period. So we had some basis from which to proceed. Now, because I've been with the city for a while, I have seen, overseen the development of our economic development strategy, our tourism development strategy, and most recently, our arts, culture, and heritage strategy. And these are things that the city did not used to actively engage in. And so we would assemble a task force to, and hire a consultant through an RFP, and then develop a strategy document that had buy-in. And then going forward, we would either form a panel or a committee to help guide with that strategy. The, in 2013, we began a process of developing our, what we call Visit Wilsonville Tourism Development Strategy. Wilsonville has seven hotels with over 700 hotel rooms. The tourism development strategy found that basically our primary competitive advantage was that we had the cheapest lodging in the Portland metro area and free parking. We are not at the mountain, we're not at the coast, we're not actually right in wine country, although it's not too far away. So Wilsonville has never really perceived itself much as being a tourist destination, unlike, say, McMinnville or even Oregon City, the oldest city west of the Mississippi. So, but however, we still had to put a certain amount of money into tourism promotion. Our tourism strategy recommended either that we contract with or form a nonprofit DMO, much like Visit McMinnville, or in the alternate, we should form a tourism promotion committee. At that time, our Chamber of Commerce was not in a position or desirous of taking on the role of tourism promotion. And so we did the alternate, which was to form the Tourism Promotion Committee. The Tourism Promotion Committee is composed of 12 members. Seven members are drawn from the tourism and hospitality industry. It is the only committee at the city of Wilsonville that has a specific membership requirement for the members to be in the hospitality business or to have experience with tourism. Then the remaining five members are ex officio advisory. Because this was a new body, we have a city council liaison who is non-voting. We also have the Chamber of Commerce appoint a member in an ex officio position. We also have, because most of our tourism events occur in our parks, and our parks oversee permitting for roadways, for events like a parade, our parks. So we also have our Park and Recreation Department represented in an ex officio fashion. And finally, because we're both in Clackamas County and Washington County, we have a representative from Clackamas County Tourism, Oregon's Mottah Territory, and from Twilton Valley, Washington County Tourism Association. So we have a good base of both practical business experience from hoteliers, restaurants, winery owners, operators, restaurateurs, and then those also who are professionals in the tourism industry to provide advice. Our annual budget for, well then, okay, what we did was, we went out for an RFP for marketing. As Jeff noted, us city folks aren't always the best at marketing. So we didn't want to assume that we would know what to do or how to do it. And so we put up, we've done RFPs on three occasions for contractors to, in effect, run our DMO program, to propose, you spend this amount on social media, this amount on website, this amount on web advertising, maybe some print advertising, et cetera. So different levels of, really more marketing. And so our current contract is with a company called J-Ray Ads and PR out of Tacoma, Washington, for $200,000 a year. And they take care of basically most of the work and including regular reports, quarterly reports and annual reports. And I think that that may be some of the core information. I'm happy to respond to any questions or issues that you might ask.
Thank you, Mark. Just as we did with Jeff, I just have a couple of questions and we'll open it up to the City Commission. The, obviously, as everyone can see, they're, they've approached the DMO differently. Wilsonville is really a different kind of approach, and you have a committee that actually stands alone and actually has developed, that committee has come up with developing the objectives, the mission, those kinds of things for that.
Yeah, so with our tourism development strategy, we did something unique, which was, we created, every year, the committee has to create a one-year action plan and a longer-range, five-year implementation plan. So where are we going over the next five years? What are we aiming for? But what are we going to do over the next fiscal year in terms of our budget and our priorities? So every year, we go back to the tourism development strategy and look to see how well we're implementing it and what kind of course corrections are needed. Now, our current tourism development strategy is 10 years old, so we have now gone out for an RFP and have just hired on a new firm to develop a new tourism development strategy for us. And in part, now is our strategy 10 years old, but the post-COVID era has been very disruptive to the lodging industry. And many of our hotels have not gone back to regular lodging capacity as they have before. So transient lodging tax revenues have been very, have been quite variable. So our city manager decided that he would just allocate every year $200,000 so that we could keep a consistent program. And I will note that during, a year or two during COVID, we did reduce that to $150,000, but now we're back up to that $200,000 annual target.
And my last question is that the members of the committee that's really functioning as a management group, would you say, well, are the hotels a part of that?
Yes, two of our largest hotels, the Hilton Garden Inn and the Holiday Inn, the owners are both on our committee.
All right. Mayor.
Gentlemen, questions for Mark?
Um, so it's a series of questions regarding the Regional Visitors Center. So with the regional, were you with the city at the time that that was still going, before it kind of, you said it phased kind of into more online?
Yes, I, as the Chamber of Commerce Executive, I actually ran that for five years, and then I moved over to the city. And after a couple of years, that's when the decision was made by the county and the city to basically close down the RVICs.
Okay. The reason I'm asking is because we, we still have a regional visitor center with Mottah Territory, and I don't think any of us really would like to see it go away. So I guess my question is, with the creation of a DMO and in hopes that we don't lose the regional visitor center, can they, can they coexist? And if they coexist, how does, what would that look like in how maybe each entity might do something? Or would you see that as something that would almost have to be morphed together?
Well, it would make some logical sense that if you're promoting to visitors and you want to distribute information to visitors, there is some logic to that connection. I will, however, defer to my colleagues, the Mayor of Phelps with Oregon's Mottah Territory, to maybe give a bit of a better explanation on that question.
Because I think I would love to see them coexist, but unless there was some rationale or partnership or discussion that says, okay, these things are mirroring each other too much, and, I don't know, I would love to hear your input on that.
Yeah, there is no, there's no reason that standing up a DMO or the city having initiatives would change that relationship. I think that goes to the advice that Jeff was offering around defining roles.
Yes.
And so I think we're all best served by leveraging each other's resources.
Right.
Oregon City actually has a wealth of assets, whether they be public, private, river access, museums, restaurants, any number of things. So my question to you is, initially, how did you identify your marketable assets and bring them into a product offering that you could take to market?
As part of our tourism development strategy, that strategy process identified key assets and potential markets. And then we began a process of working with our contractors on focusing on those assets and markets in terms of promotion and targeting the correct kind of audience. And I will say, our efforts are much more sophisticated now than they were previously. The agency that we've retained for our tourism promotion destination marketing is an expert. They've done this for Tacoma, they've done it for several clients over the years, and so they know what they're doing, if you will, in terms of using social media influencers, getting reports on lodging capacity and revenues that are generated by hotels in Wilsonville in an aggregate fashion, occupancy levels. So really, our contractor has taken on the bulk of a lot of the, actually doing the work, and the committee acts more like a board, providing general policy direction, but not actually necessarily managing per se the programs.
So initially, did you experience any reluctance of any would-be product offerings to join the effort? So how was that overcome?
No, because we do it for free. We're not a membership organization, and that was one of the issues when I was with the chamber. It was always this kind of funny thing, some chamber members felt like, hey, you should just promote chamber members, but the reality was, we had a contract with the county and the city to promote everybody. So now that we're the city doing it, we just promote all businesses in the hospitality and tourism industry, and we promote way outside Wilsonville. The reality is, we want people to come and stay in Wilsonville and then go visit places during the day. So we have a whole series of day trip itineraries where people can go if they want arts and culture, or if they want history, or wine country, or beer drinking, or whatever it might be. We have itineraries for everybody and destinations, and the objective is to have them stay in Wilsonville so we collect the TLT revenues.
I have to ask a simple question because I need to make sure I understand this. A gentleman described the TLT, which I believe was tourism lodging tax. Is that different than the transient room tax, or are they one in the same? Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Adam?
Yeah, thank you, Mark. It's good to see you. So am I understanding it correctly that there is no executive director and that the day-to-day operations are strictly with the contractor as well as the general guidelines of the city?
Correct. I will say, we have two staff, myself and the assistant to the city manager, who, if you will, we kind of, we manage the program in conjunction with the contractor.
Okay. And I was wondering if you could talk about the rationale for going down that route as opposed to a more traditional DMO? Why, was it cost savings that came with the contracting? What were some of the reasons why you decided to go down that route?
Okay. Basically, we had no organization in the city that had the capacity or willingness to take on being the DMO. And our strategy said either form a DMO or contract one, or create the Tourism Promotion Committee. So since we, our option was not to have a DMO per se, meaning a nonprofit, we created the Tourism Promotion Committee. And since we as city staff are not tourism marketing professionals, we went ahead and did a request for proposals for companies to submit proposals to be our marketing agency of record.
Excellent, thank you.
Hi. Oh, sure.
Hi, Mark, it's Tony Conkle. Thanks for taking the time and providing this information, it's really great. Can you talk a little bit, so, you know, the contract is really for marketing. How does Wilsonville, does Wilsonville provide funding through, from the city for events?
Yes.
And how is that run different from this?
Many years ago, 25 years ago, we set up a grant program. We have two grant programs that are each $25,000. One is focused on basically tourism cultural events and the other is more of a general opportunity grant fund. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board originally oversaw the, the community event fund, and we transferred that to the Tourism Promotion Committee. However, in tourism promotion, you're supposed to spend your money marketing to people over 50 miles away by state law. And the reality is, these are mostly community events drawing people from neighboring towns in Portland. So, and the Tourism Promotion Committee felt hamstrung because they didn't feel like they could not award the Rotary Club the money for the concerts, or the Arts and Culture Association money for the art festival. So very little change occurred in terms of the distribution of funds from the Park and Rec Board to the Tourism Committee. Recently, in the past year, we formed an Arts, Culture, and Heritage Commission, and we moved the tourism, the grant program over to that commission because the reality is that program was funding mostly local events. So we do promote those in our tourism program. However, the reality is that those events are mostly local, cultural, and community events. And so a different body now awards those grant funds.
Okay, so you separated the two, the marketing-
Yes, yeah, arts, culture, and heritage is one, and tourism promotion is separate.
Okay, thank you.
That makes a lot of sense. I guess one of the things I was glad to hear you say is that some years ago, and many of the people in this room were on that committee with me, we have that information about who we need to target, what our assets are. It probably needs to be updated a little bit, but I don't think it's completely out of date. Part of what the effort was is that we didn't really have any way to implement it. That's, that's always been our big problem. But I do appreciate the fact that the model that you're talking about actually works, and it, and I think it is a viable option for us to discuss, so I really, really appreciate it. I wasn't sure, I mean, I knew a lot, because you and I have talked in the past, but thank you for getting more in-depth in about how it works, because that's, that's real critical for me.
I will make maybe one additional comment. When we did our tourism strategy 10 years ago, I did research all over the state. I only found six government DMOS. Almost everything else was a 501(c)(6) that was contracted by the city to do the tourism promotion. Clackamas County was one of those. Cities on the Oregon coast like Rockaway Beach, Garibaldi, several of those. But there were actually very few government-directed tourism programs like how we are doing it, I will say. And I don't think that has changed much over the past 10 years. So this is a bit of a different model than you will find with most DMO situations. So this is a bit of a different model than you will find with most DMO situations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
And speaking of Clackamas County, uh, we have Samara Phelps here with us, and I think you're the manager, right?
Executive Director.
Executive Director of the, uh, the Mount Hood Territory. And so, uh, without further ado, I'll turn it over to her.
Great. Thank you so much. Um, it's a pleasure to be here um and be able to talk to you about a topic that I find very, very close to my heart, obviously for my work, but I also think it's really an amazing thing to get to share the places we live with, with visitors. Um, and the gentleman that have just spoke, um, we work closely together and you're getting very sound technical advice today. So I will keep mine pretty direct to our specific model. Um, as Clackamas County Tourism, as you heard, we are marketing the destination as Oregon's Mount Hood Territory. We're funded entirely through the county's transient room tax. So that applies to all lodging properties in Clackamas County. And that is by voter approved ordinance. And that ordinance was defined and kind of re-scoped back in 1993. And with it, it created the Tourism Development Council. So the Tourism Development Council is a nine member board with the majority coming from the lodging properties and the industry, uh, tourism industry as a whole. And those are appointed by our Board of County Commissioners. So that's how we intersect. We, I kind of have a dual board leadership situation where my Tourism Development Council is responsible for the tourism work. They are responsible for guiding that work. And we are also accountable to the Board of County Commissioners through those appointments. And my staff is actually staff from Clackamas County. So we are a Department of Clackamas County from a government structure. We are uh structured that way because of this relationship that we are a voter approved ordinance. Um, we see some really significant advantages to doing that because of the alignment. Um, I think some of the things that you should be aware of with that embedded nature that we have, that is more direct staff than either of the two options you've already heard is, is what Jeff mentioned in terms of speed. We are an economic development engine. We are here to serve our business partners and our residents in our community. But the speed of operation, as you know, in government is very different than in the private sector. So we are constantly doing a code switching between those languages, which gives us a high degree of accountability, a deep sense of service to our stakeholders. But there are definitely trade offs in terms of the, the structure as we embody it. Um, we are a destination organization that includes marketing. Um, that is the foundation. Marketing and promotion are included, written right into the ordinance. Um, and marketing is both the channels that we own and the media that we earn. So public relations is extremely important in that. We do development and community relations. So that's taking care of our stakeholders, um, like yourself in terms of government relations and community outreach, residents, chambers, business associations. We work really closely with those. And the development is really about defining what our assets are and supporting our community partners who are delivering the service. Because you guys are an important stakeholder to us. Um, but as we know, all tourism is really local. It's them walking through the door of a business. It's them on a site in a, a city park, wherever they might be, um, having that experience is, is very specific to the community. So, um, then the other piece is leadership and administration. So, you know, there is just the business of doing, doing business within our, within our programs. And with that, I would say that we are um here as a partner, like we are part of your layer. You are in a very sophisticated tourism industry here in Oregon, as you saw by the examples that were shared earlier. Um, we are here, Oregon City is part of our, our work. We are also part of the Portland region and the state has tourism. So what's really important for our local entities is to get around that focus. What is it that Oregon City wants? What is it that Oregon City needs in a structure that works for your community? So you can be clear on your focus and you can be responsive to those opportunities. Um, cause we don't want to see any of them slip past us, right? Um, we're a really special place and we want to make sure that we're able to leverage that. Um, whether that's coming from um the local level or up at the state or national level, you want somebody who can speak for your tourism and say like, yes, this is meeting our communities' needs. And that you can talk to and say, hey, is it meeting our needs? Tell us about what's happening here.
Well, uh, this is the other, I have two questions for you and then we'll go from there. Uh, in terms of, in terms of align, uh, aligning, aligning alignment uh with the county's assets and your resources, are you uh doing more of the marketing of the entire county? Or are you providing resources to uh local communities so that they can do the marketing and that type of stuff?
So we are doing the marketing for the county. Well, my primary mission is around countywide impact. Um, but that is done through partnership and collaboration. So we do offer things like co-ops. We work directly with our community leads, like yourself or um staff here at the city uh to help define what opportunities are right for which communities and what it is that you want upleveled, that you want shared when we're in a room and have an opportunity to pitch something. We're, we're here to partner with you on that, but we are definitely, our funds are for the countywide programs and we're doing that through our contracted services and staff, a paid professional staff to do that at the county level. Um, we also run strategic investment opportunities. Um, so we do make direct investments in other programs, but that is very specific and project based.
Terms of the, the board, um, that, of the marketing board, um, is private industry heavily represented there?
Yes. Um, my stakeholders are most, or my board members are most often direct operators um by our bylaws. Uh, four of them need to be lodging properties. So we have seats for four lodging properties. And we also um then want geographic diversity and interest in the tourism industry and a direct tie to Clackamas County. So either your business is here or you are a resident in Clackamas County. That's how we prioritize those.
Ma'am?
Go ahead. Questions, guys?
Well, you know me and I come from the public, the private sector. And I agree. I think government agencies move at a glacial pace. And I think we face this year after year. It's called time to market. And our time to market is coming again. So my question is, for any of the members of these, this great group of information providers tonight, how did you make the transition from the planning phase to the act phase? Because we plan and then we plan again, then we review the plan. We gotta get to a point where we act. How do you do that?
I, I'll jump in, or sorry, it might, I, I, I'll, I'll jump in and say kind of what our city did. So our city initially, prior to going to the MO, they set up a grant committee. Uh, and went that route. We're gonna, we're gonna source this out. We're gonna give this money out to have people come in to tourism based things. And that quickly proved not to be the case. So it would not be as impactful as they had hoped. So what they did is they went out and hired a consultant to, like I said, come and kind of give them a structure of how to, city council, this, this, you, this works in this role. A board, you do well as a governing board, not a working board, because your, your job is this. You need to hire a person with these qualities and to accomplish, you know, to, and this is our focus. So they were, we were able to move quickly. Um, they, when I took the keys, I knew like what the goals were. I had the uh, you know, I knew it was ahead of me. I need, I had, based on the professional recommendations, and I was able to sort of put a house together and hire another person to help me. Um, so we moved quickly. Um, because we had staff, you know, and, and clear direction, a lot of work. It took about a year probably um to consult, stand up these things, build a website, um, get secure an office. You know, an account, a bookkeeper. It takes a bit to set things up, but uh after I was hired, it moved pretty quickly, honestly.
And I would say with that implementation question, it's, as you've heard and seen in this presentation, it's gonna evolve. So you have to also make a choice to say, ready to implement and empower, I think what we're hearing, empower someone to be able to make that decision and make, make some implementation. And also know that it's iterative. The environment is changing, your visitors are changing, your assets are changing. So that's not going to be a forever, but that's also should be a place um of confidence that we can make a decision today and we can do some good work. And that can be different good work in the, in the future or a different structure. But it's, it really is about empowering that implementation mode to say, we're ready. Let's do a, a focused goal though, right? Jeff knew what it was they wanted to say. And then he's like, okay, I know how to say that. So if marketing is your thing, or if it's development of assets, say that and you find the skills to do it.
Mark, can you answer the same question?
Sorry, let me say it again.
I, I would iterate, to stay focused, it's really budget. I would look at your budget and your goals, right? I mean, it's kind of like, what's realistic to accomplish? I don't know what your budget is or, you know, but like Samara said, one step at a time. Focus on getting it off the ground. You're focused on one, but you know, identifying that one thing. Um, and because you, you can't be everything to everyone. And I don't know what your resources are, but they will grow. Uh, and as they do, you can add on uh different pieces to the puzzle.
Mark, can you answer that same question? Implementation?
Um, well, I guess in, implementation occurs, you know, through our tourism promotion committee, uh, giving the go ahead on something. And then we work with our contractor to advance uh whatever that particular project or program may be.
Yeah, I think one of the keys is I look around even at the composition of this audience. And there's people in here that bring expertise to this subject. And the composition of that committee is everything. They're private sector people. They're in it to make money and be successful. There's expertise in river traffic. There's expertise in tour, guiding tours. So it's interesting when they said, I think the composition of your committees was, I believe is like over seven out of 12 are from the private sector. So I think that's what we need to do to move this forward, to get from the plan phase to the implementation or act phase. And I think, and small successes would go a long way.
Yeah, I think that the two things that, that I hear that I think some of us have been saying all along is separating out the community events, which are, again, people do come in for them. But that's not the primary focus of those events. Those events are community building. They're for the community. And if somebody wants to come in from Timbuktu, great, but it's not part of this. To me, it, it should be a separate thing.
Well, I heard a comment made that tourism is supposed to focus at an area greater than 50 miles.
But there's the whole, remember the whole thing, we always heads and beds? And we realized that, that the majority of people that are coming to see us are not from 50 miles away. So we should just throw that baby out and, and, and stick with promoting, you know, again, as what our documents said and update that. But I, I think that the two, the other thing I heard is that focus on one thing. And you said it very eloquently. We are not everything to everybody. We can't.
And that's where, that's where we've been going wrong.
I know. It's totally where we've, we've been saying that. We gotta get off that merry-go-round from trying to be all things to all people. Seems to me the three things that I heard from all of these folks is focus on one thing. And then as you evolve, it changes, but it's still that one focus. It's not trying to do this, this, this. And that's, that's where we've really have not been, been able to move forward like we want to. So, you know, if, if we decide that we're going to, you know, market our assets and that's where the whole focus has to be. It can't be, oh, let's, let's put on, you know, the first city festival. That's, again, that's over here.
Well, the one gentleman said they severed that, that process from the other and it was very effective to separate.
I was gonna say, in, in the whole being all things to all people, right? I agree. But then there was also the discussion about defining the roles of each of the organizations that are part of this, right? So that everybody's not trying to be all things to all people, right?
We're stepping all over each other.
Chamber focus is here, Doka focus is here. If there's a heritage committee, it's focusing here, the DMO is focusing here, whatever organization. I, I, I think that's part of what I heard as well.
Right, yeah.
Way is do what you're good at.
Well, the DMO is here and everything else is focusing, yeah.
And I agree with that. And that's why you have to divide up the labor. There's gonna be people who are very good at leading tours. There's gonna be people that are very good at river assets. There's gonna be restaurateurs. There's gonna be those that are good at historical attractions, you know, break, break that team up and assign it to subcomponents and then bring it together.
I didn't see any questions that came up from the audience. Anybody have anything written? Hey, we'll get them.
I, I'm trying to wrap my mind around, we can't be all things to all people. Because we're in a unique position compared to Wilsonville and McMinnville. McMinnville has a, a multi, I'll call it a multi-day attraction on winery tours. I mean, you're not gonna go visit 200 wineries in a day.
I hope not.
It'd be done by 11 o'clock somewhere. But when you think about the, the rainbow of assets that we have in Oregon City, none of which are a day. But all of which together are way more than a day.
Right.
So I, I just want to be careful. When, when we talk about not trying to be all things to all people, we are, we are gonna have a historic component. We're gonna have a winery, beer component. We're gonna have an outdoor recreation component. But, but the trick is gonna be marketing that as one basket. So in that way, yeah, we want to focus on one thing. We want to focus on our back basket of attractions.
Right. I'm not, I wasn't saying all, that
Yeah, that's why.
The attractions is not the all thing to all people. I'm talking about trying to do everything sort, yeah, events and this and that.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, make sure we're clear about
Yeah.
where our focus is.
Yeah.
Our, our focus is in the fact that we have so much to attract people.
We do. And we have, why we have the agritourism that you can, you know, what's the specific name of the, the program where you, the farm tour, farm loops.
Of farms, yes.
And you can go out, you can, you can visit a half a dozen wineries just within a stone's throw of Oregon City. So, so we have a question here that says, what is the percentage of the uh TRT available after the city takes a percentage? It meaning what is ours in Oregon City?
What is our TRT? I mean, our
Or, or Mr. Conkle.
Oh, I don't know. This question.
Yeah, I think
Wasn't it answered in the presentation by law?
Well, I think the question is directed to us.
Oregon City. You need to have a specific answer for your city to translate.
Yeah, yeah, cause, cause
And so what are we doing? Annually, we, annually, our tourism uh marketing uh budget is around 200, $300,000.
Well, I think what you're asking is what, yeah, what's our, what is our tax at right now?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
The hotel, motel, lodge tax.
It's a 6%.
It's a 6%.
Yeah. And it generates how much a year? Uh, it generates about 250,000 dollars a year. And does, does the city retain a portion of that or does it all go to tourism?
There's some administration.
Well, there's, there's, there's a small amount of administration, but more, all of it, uh, most of it goes toward the tourism uh program.
Cities always had a very small percentage of it go towards administration because you have to, you know, it has to come in, it has to go out, it has to get processed. That just doesn't happen without any, you know, without any staffing component.
So previously, in the last budget cycle, we had a, a tourism coordinator position that was funded with some of that TRT money. Um, a portion of s- staff is funded through that. If you may recall, historically, you know, we've been putting a, a lot of that money aside until we came up with a determination on how we were going to spend those funds and implement the programs. And, you know, so with the COVID hit, things kind of tamped down. Then there was a discussion about the DMO. So in this current budget cycle that started July 1, we did not fund the tourism coordinator position, right? So we were holding that money so that we could have this conversation to determine which road, which, which route are we gonna take?
Do we know about, sorry?
Has there been a carryover from previous?
Absolutely. I think
We've saved up, yeah.
We can get to that number probably here in a little bit, but it's, 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 I think it was up, it was up over $700,000 that we had accumulated. I think we're gonna be up over nine by the end of the two, the cycle.
Held that.
Right. But it's, I think James is absolutely correct. Like we built that up over multiple, multiple years of collecting. You know, realistically, we bring in 240 to 270 ish with a hotel that we have right now.
That's good. I mean, it shows that we
Well, we're being
We've been, we haven't been spending that money.
We're squirreling away. And obviously it would be great if we, you know, at times it would And obviously, it would be great if we, you know, and at times it was more because we had a half a dozen bed and breakfasts in Oregon City. We had the the hotel. And there was other people contributing, you know, besides the river shore contributing to the to the tax.
RV park?
Yeah, the RV park.
So so leaving aside the carryover, we would, we would have a budget for a DMO and its activities, 120,000 a year, 230,000?
It depends on where we set that 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 percentage that's going to go to the DMO. Right?
We have to decide that.
So if it's, let's say it was 70, 30, right?
What else would we do with it?
Well, are we going to have staff that's involved? Are we going, or, you know, are there going to be, you know? I don't recall. I guess it depends on what the program becomes.
What if we want to use some, we use some of it for the events?
Right, yeah.
It's going to be a big grant.
Events grants that we have.
OK. Got it.
So here's a question I think is for the three of you. So it says, what are your measurement metrics for the success of the DMO formula that you current, that you have?
Um, I can jump in.
Sure, please.
So ours is transient room tax revenue, right? So how we're performing. We also do Smith Travel Research for occupancy. So we can, we're tracking the demand and the occupancy rates for our properties, which also helps us identify seasonality and and needs. And then Dean Runyon does a visitor report for the state every year that gets you visitor spending. And then for our specific programs, they have individual KPIs. But like for marketing, we would have return on investment, attributions, reach, conversions on our website, very direct, specific KPIs about the marketing components.
Your Jeff or Mark, whichever one of you wants to go?
OK, yeah, very similar to Samara. We use the Smith Travel Research STR reports to help determine occupancy levels. Also, we track our website traffic, both in terms of the web and social media. And finally, we begun to utilize a service called Datafy, which uses aggregated credit card data on people who visit our hotels and then where else they go. So we can determine exactly where our visitors who are staying overnight are going in terms of wine country or other attractions. We don't have personally identifiable information, but this has helped us to better fine tune our marketing efforts to the correct audiences, most of which now come from Washington and California.
Well, you kind of get tired if you're traveling I-5. You get to Wilsonville and you think, oh, I'm tired, I'm going to stay overnight. It's that free parking. And in the distinguished character, it's a free parking. Uh, Jeff?
Uh, I'll, I'll jump in. Um, I I use Datafy, I use everything that they've said. Our measurement of success continues to morph. And I would stress that that that's the case because things are changing. When we started, we were a destination marketing organization. We measured our transient lodging tax, the occupancy, the rate. And our whole goal was to get people to go to our website and then get people from our website to go to local businesses and hopefully purchase a stay or get inspired. And we would measure that web traffic. Well, all of those things, I mean, we're actually doing really well. But the way that those things are measured are, everything's changing constantly. So Google's becoming, it's changed over to G4. And it's, you know, our baseline for what we measured is now different. They're measuring how people engage. The way in which we measure things is changing. So I guess what I would encourage you to say, to look at is that even the things that you're measuring, success, three years from now are going to be very different. So you have to look at success. We started to look at it also in terms of resident sentiment for us. You know, we've become a very, we're, we're growing pretty quickly with our efforts. And we're concerned that, you know, it's having a, we want to make sure it's having a positive impact on residents. So we also, we participate in a study with the Sustainable Tourism Lab with Oregon State University, and we measure resident sentiment. So we can see, are we doing, how is this impacting? Is it positive? Is it negative? You know, can we stay close with our with our community? We measure, we give surveys, all of the sales data, all of the tracking cell phones. We, we do all of the things you can do to try to figure out how our, how it's working. At the end of the day, what I found out is that the measurements keep changing. And once you think you can track a cell phone, they change the laws and now your data is different from the year prior. So I would just put that out there.
I have a a question that was asked of me a couple of days ago. So I know that a lot of things have QR codes and you go on your mobile app. You know, for, so let's say, for instance, for somebody like me that travels to eastern Oregon a lot, you don't have a lot of cell service out there. So is some of the stuff that you are marketing, is there some paper involved? You know, we get a lot of requests in Oregon City. I would like a map, you know? I would like, you know, they want something to take away in their hand.
We've gone back to that. We started strictly digital, but again, it was what we did. We we always think about, could we or should we with our money? We could go print. Print is very expensive if you're going to advertise print. It's a very expensive investment. So we're doing that now more than we did in the beginning because we have a much larger budget. Things like maps, tangible takeaways, yes, we're doing that. But our budgets, you know, it just depends on what your strategy is. I think print is valuable, but it's expensive.
Well, you could limit what what that is by doing just a few things, print that are done well, not everything. So, Mark, are you guys, do you have any print stuff?
Very little. We have a general marketing brochure that is like at the PDX and the regional, the visitor centers around Oregon. It's a general brochure for Export Wilsonville, meant to entice you to the website to get more information. We've decreased the amount of print advertising, just have not found it to be as effective and the metrics are harder to track. I do agree with Jeff, however, I'm thinking at some point I might want a map that the hoteliers can hand out. Because the reality is most of our staff who work at hotels don't live in Wilsonville. They tell people to go to downtown Portland. So the problem is, we we have a fair amount of business turnover. So obviously, if you do a map, you're going to have to redo it every year.
We also do print, but the majority of our marketing budget goes into various forms of digital. And I think two points that came up there is like Mark saying, like, we need a map for the hotels, right? Like, you have to know the purpose of the print. The print is always going to be a part of a bigger strategy. So it's, and what I hear in that is it's about meaning where your visitors at, right? So if you have some that need some paper, you're probably going to have some paper components. You get a lot of online, you're going to get, you know, reach a different audience in a different way with those messages. So you really can't think of any one deliverable. And the point about changing your metrics, I think one of the advantages that you guys have making this decision at a community level, you really have that be success be about what you want for your community. And it it can be less specific than some of this tracking and performance of a particular ad, things like that, which is important. Somebody needs to be tracking that. But that's going to be defined by your technical experts once you get into that focus and that lane.
What you're saying is it's not the all, the end all to be all. It's just, it's part of the picture. Like I said, part of, you know, when I travel in eastern Oregon, I have to take paper. You just, you just, you know, you might get in the town and their their Wi-Fi might be, you know, right around the Dairy Queen and that is it. So I have both. But, you know, it's, like you said, I think the key was knowing what the purposes of what you're going to print. So if you're going to do a map, then you have the map and you make sure you update it every year. You don't have to print everything. You just, people will find the resources, but a lot of times they want to have something and say, oh, I'm looking at this. So the last question I have is written down is, and this is, this got to be my friend Thelma. Coraggio Group did a Oregon City Tourism Strategy in 2017. In the plan, they offered to follow through with the steps in the plan. Why did we not take them up on their offer? I can't answer that question, so I'm going to ask you that question. I'm not going to be able to answer that question.
I'm not going to be able to. I mean, there were, there were components of it that were implemented.
Yes, but not all of it.
But not all of it. And as part of that strategy, there were multiple tiers that were supposed to come online as additional hotels came online.
And resources came on.
With additional funding and resources. I think we hit COVID in between there. That diverted a lot of revenue from tourism and events to business grant program that we created, so.
Well, that's what I, yeah, that's what I would have said. Because, yeah, that's, that's, we know that, that it, you know.
I have a, I think, like I said, not to beat it, but I mean, you know, there were components of that that were being implemented. You know, we have advertising currently going on through like KT, KTU, you know, trying to expand that reach. You know, but then once again, you know, as you're well aware, once the tourism coordinator position became vacant, there was a decision not to fill it and then we didn't fund it. So really, you know, the staff, we, we had a dedicated person and now we do not. So it's trying to, you know, do as much as we can, realizing the positions we have are broader economic development on behalf of the whole city.
Uh, just a question of the, of our experts. How do you, when you market your communities, sometimes things are not open? How, how do you sort of, how do you bridge that gap? When, when, if you, oh, take that risk, you market something and it's not open? It's not on a schedule. And and of course, the customer can be unforgiving. Because when they, when they come to your house, they expect you to be open. And not every Tuesday on a blue moon when the sun is rising on Thursday. So how do you, how do you do that? Until you, in terms of your community partners? Everybody's open? Everybody says they'll commit to something?
I, I'll jump in and try to answer that. You know, we don't, we market an idea of McMinnville. We market the people and the things to do. We're not, you know, and we'll, we'll, we'll market events that we're know, are going, we know are going to be happening. But hopefully, we've provided a marketing that's inspiring to come to take advantage of multiple businesses that are open. Now, we are lucky enough to have businesses that are open. I mean, we, it's harder on a Monday, there's a lot closed. But there are restaurants, there are things open. But I would say that it's becoming more and more normal to be open all the time. So I, I don't, I can't speak to the particular closures or the resources that you have. But I imagine you've got enough that's open daily that you could direct folks to. You could do that through itineraries. You could literally say Monday tease that, you know, what to do on certain days of the week. There's all sorts of strategies. But I would say focus on the broader message and not the individual, like, come to X restaurant specifically. That's just a, a part of it.
Yeah, I have to agree with Jeff. I will say, though, for Wilsonville, when we lost the World of Speed Motorsports Museum, that was quite a loss because we had, it was getting international attention and it was building up quite a momentum. And then the pandemic hit and they decided to pull the plug and close. So you have to be careful about building too much around a business.
Yeah, and I would agree with both of those statements. And as a community, you are kind of doing that inspiration level. And the, the nice thing about being in the environment that we are now where there is, hey, Google, your friend, Google, Google My Business. There's a lot of places where even our small operations can be conveying the detailed information that's needed so that you can be supporting them, but not necessarily on the hook for your reputation if their hours have changed.
Google is very hard to change. I have been trying for two years to change something in a place I I work with. I've tried all sorts of things. I can't, I can't get it to change it.
Let's talk, let's see if we can.
It's extremely frustrating. It's like I, there are days I go, I Google.
I, I just, I don't know what Samara said. I think that educate, you know, part of what we do also occasionally is educating our local businesses or working with our downtown association or working with our chamber to provide sort of those tips, like how to manage your own Google listing. Why is that important? Do you, you know, trick, some community training through the expertise that we have and partnering with our other local organizations? Because it is a lift, you know? A DMO is not going to do everything. That, you know, they're going to help get people the door. But at the end of the day, it's the experience they have when they cross threshold or they visit your website, your individual website, or you get a smile on the street. You know, there is an education to your community. There's an opportunity there, I should say.
I, thank you. I, I would, I like the idea you say inspiration focus. Because, you know, the wineries are not open seven days a week. They're primarily open on Friday and Saturday. So somebody comes here on a Wednesday, at least in our area, they're not open every day of the week. Maybe they are, maybe they are in McMinnville. But there's lots of places that, you know, again, because of staffing, maybe, you know, because there's a ready college right there. We have places here that are not open on some days, particularly restaurants, because they can't get staff. You know? So it's, it's, it's difficult.
Workforce is a major issue for the state. You know, it's impacting tourism. It's where, it's a big deal of how the things that affect housing and it's, it's, it's not just in Oregon City, you know? So tourism is asked to come to the table for part of those solutions. And on the state level, we're, we're dealing with, how do we, how do we do that? How do we, how do we, how do we fix that?
Well, the workforce issue is even more than that. It's, it's, it's how finding places for the workforce, it's providing child, it's getting childcare. I mean, it's, it's a, it's a, it's a much bigger issue than what a DMO can manage. But it is part of that, it's part of the component of getting those, those people to the asset so that actually the places can be open and, and then retaining them, which is the other thing. So, all right, anything else, you guys? Yes, Mark?
I'd just like to thank the three of you for not only sticking around for your presentation, but the entire dialogue because there was follow-ups and appreciate, you didn't have to do that. I appreciate it. This was a, I think I got a lot of questions answered. Still have a lot more, but I also just wanted to thank you. But also the turnout tonight from the audience. One of my concerns has been, oh, every couple of years we have this discussion and we have to try to say, this is the one meeting you need to be at. And then a couple of years later, we do it again. I really think that this is it. This is, and, and you, this community showed up tonight to, to listen. You will have your say and we will listen to it at a future regular meeting. But do not forget this night and do not miss the next couple of meetings. I think they're going to be really crucial to some decisions that I think most of us have been working on for 20 years. And so I really mean that we need to stay involved pretty, you know, keep an eye on this activity and what we're doing because we need your help.
And go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to say, I wanted to thank our three guests. And I don't have anything more for the, for the three of them, but I do have a couple of things that I would still like us to discuss.
Sure, absolutely.
Before we close this.
Sure, I would agree.
OK.
Adam? Frank?
Incredibly thankful to the three guests who gave us so much information. I have to ask for more. Thank you.
Well, I, I want to, in addition to thanking our guests and thanking Mark and Jeff, and I'll be sure to look you up when I'm in McMinnville the next time. And Samara, I started out with you. I said, well, we've got experts right here in our own backyard that we should talk to. And, and the other thing too, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, we're all here, we're all hearing the same thing. And I know we now, you know, the wheels are turning and we're thinking. And I think there's a lot more. But I, I want to say on behalf of the commission, I think we are determined to get something out of this that's going to work for Oregon City. And that's, I think we are all committed to that. So please have no reservation about the fact that we're not going to move forward. This is, this, I think we've all said, that's why we wanted to do this. We're committed to making this happen. So, but I thank you for coming and I thank Jeff and Mark. This has been great. And it's just, it didn't really focus a lot more questions because like you, a lot of mine were answered. It's just, it's making me think now about how, what might be the best way. But then again, we're going to hear from you all about that as well. And I think that the overall thing that I want to leave us with as I close is we need to think about this less of our individual organizations and more about what the big umbrella picture is. Because that's what we're trying to create. We're trying to create the umbrella. We're all going to be able to get under it. But we need to, you know, not look at it from, well, this is my niche, this is my niche. We all have our niches, but this is the bigger picture. And that's, I think, another thing that we were lacking in the past. So thank you, everybody. And we're going to close. Thank you to our guests. Thank you to our guests, so we have a little bit more discussion with the commission. We'll take a quick break after we do that, and then we'll go on to our other items that we have.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just the question on the budget.
Yeah.
So, um, the beginning balance as of seven, one twenty-three, uh, under the adopted budget was approximately eight hundred and eighty thousand. Um, we assumed, so over the two years, so every each year, approximately two hundred and fifty thousand. So over the two years, five hundred thousand dollars of revenue was what we adopted, just looking back historically, being a little bit conservative. Um, twenty-five percent of one F T E is covered, so that's about thirty, a little over thirty thousand per year. And then about a hundred and forty thousand in tourism promotion through marketing strategy, marketing collateral supplies, social media, professional digital services, community showcase program, arts commission and special projects. Um, so we are estimating at the end of the first fiscal year, an ending balance of about nine hundred and sixty thousand, and then at the end of the second biennium, or June thirtieth of twenty-five, um, a little over one million dollars, based on the adopted budget and the assumptions I just spelled out.
Okay.
What did you work?
Yeah, yeah, where did you do? Go ahead, Michael.
Well, I, the, the first thing, being, um, Mr. Graham, thank you for your steps that you laid out here. Um, but I'm ready to go right past step one. I, we have a tourism plan. I don't think we need a ribbon committee, that's just gonna take more time, more money. Does it need to be updated? Yes. But let's get a board of directors in place that knows our city, knows how that needs to be, uh, updated. And I do think it's important, and I think all three of, uh, of our guests made the comment, and that is, the data, the data portion of it, and, and the current data, because, as we all know, a lot of things changed during COVID. So, um, I think that's still an important piece, but I don't want to see us spend time without that data information and with a separate Blue Ribbon Committee spending time looking, updating that tourism plan. Let's spin the thing up, and one of their first tasks is to update tourism plan as necessary. Because I, I, I've kind of got the same outlook as Commissioner O'Donnell, you know? We've, we've got that private sector speed.
Yeah, I agree. I think we can, we can, uh, in a subsequent meeting, we can, uh, direct staff to get this, uh, strategic plan updated. I don't think we need the committee to get the plan updated. I think we need to get the plan updated, and as that is getting updated, move to two and three, because I think the, the other critical issue is what type of entity we think might work best for Oregon City. You know, I don't know what that is. I mean, my brain right now is trying to say, okay, how about some of that, some of that, and some of that? You know, but I don't want to create, you know, an animal that isn't workable. But there are definitely parts of all three of what they talked about that were really appealing to me. I'm not sure how that could come together, but, you know, we can explore that. I would, I would, you know, like to explore that with all of you, and that's not tonight, but I think that there were, you know, some really good things about each one of them.
I think we need some legal advice on the C three versus C six.
I think, to me, I'm, I'm already leaning to the C six.
What, so am I, but I don't know what the pitfalls might be.
Yeah. I do know, just as a, as a caveat, um, there was a little bit of, um, we might want to touch base with historic downtown Willamette and Rebecca Hollenback. There was an issue a couple of years back on their status, and then the IRS came in, and it was, anyway, there was.
Wasn't that pretty?
No, not for them, I mean, they're still there, they're still existing, but it had to do with their status. So that, that's the question that I would want to get answered, about what was it that sort of triggered that involvement by our friends at the Internal Revenue Service? So, but yeah, I think, I think you're right. I, I would, I agree with you, skipping, I don't want to do skip, step one. I don't, I don't think we need that, we've been there, we've done that, we got a plan, let's get the plan updated.
Um, can I recommend eliminating more steps?
Let's hear.
I, I would, I, I'm open to eliminating step one, but I think that comes only after public comment from this group.
Oh, absolutely.
Um, but I do recommend, um, also dropping step three and the first seven words of step three A, which is, um, three A is identifying an existing five oh one three C, and the seven words that I want to eliminate on step three A is if an existing entity cannot be identified. We should not be using an existing entity.
So you think we should create?
We need to start fresh.
We need to start fresh.
Absolutely.
I think you got a consensus on that.
Yeah, we have a consensus, we are starting with a, you know.
It's gotta be its own thing.
The only way that it can succeed, in my opinion.
In my, I, in my opinion, I think, but, I mean, that should be part of this conversation for the public too, before we get there. But I, I think those are the two steps we need to really think about whether we need, um.
Tried using existing entities, and it didn't, it didn't work.
And they need to, yeah, so it needs to start fresh and have a buy-in from all those entities equally.
Because I think if it's, if it's new and it's fresh, I think we can start from a place of equality, as opposed to all of that other wrangling that's gone on in the past.
Yep.
Nobody has a dominant position.
Exactly. And everybody will have skin in the game, so to speak. Okay. Anything else?
Anything else, Mr. Mitchell? I don't think so.
Okay, well, let's, um.
I, but I think we want that, that we want this topic on an agenda.
Yeah, so, so, do we have to vote on having the plan updated, or can we make that as a consensus? What is, what is your legal preference?
Guess, not sure. What, how, how do we want to move forward with what the next step is gonna be? Right, I mean, I've heard have us start hiring a consultant, update the plan, but then I've, you know, are we creating, are we moving to creating a new entity?
I think.
Or are we having a public meeting to have public comment before we do it?
Yes, yes. We're saying, we need to have a public meeting first to have the public speak and to make a, a public decision after those comments and discussions about those, especially about those two steps. But I'm, I mean, I think we are all leaning to that, but I think my, my, um, opinion on step one and the step three comments could be changed by public comment. So I think we go with the, uh, with a public meeting that says, we want to, you know, let the public, um, comment about this work session, comment about these steps.
So leave the steps the way they are, and then we have a debate about?
We can, we can reiterate what we think, but if the public says, well, well, maybe you should think about this way. And then at that public meeting, we can maybe say, okay, we now agree that the next step is to eliminate this step, and this is where we want to go, or we need another meeting, or.
Does, and, and I'm getting ahead a little bit, because we haven't had the public comment component to this, right? But when we talk about, you know, if we were gonna move to a three A where we're creating another entity of some name, right? Whether it's a DMO or another committee, right? Is, is the, I guess to think about is, you know, the, the entities identified in step one, are, are they kind of the, the basis of whatever that entity is, the makeup of it? Or, you know, how do you want to have that discussion? Right, like, you heard, like, you know, four of them were hotel-based, right? Because they had multiple hotels versus, you know, the makeup of that committee.
I would like us to create categories as opposed to having organizations. I don't want it to get to where we're saying, this group, this group, this group, because you're gonna leave somebody out.
Isn't it, you know?
Step four lays out a pretty good, right, list of, of interest.
Exactly.
So, okay, so, so we could work through.
So leave those steps in place and discuss.
Can I make a try at something?
Yeah.
So that public meeting, in, in one of our regular meetings, we want to decide whether or not we need a blue ribbon panel or whether we're gonna go right on. We need to decide whether we're gonna try to do it with an existing organization or a new organization. And if it's a new organization, we need to decide whether it should be a five oh one C three or a five oh one C six or some other form, and we want to hear from the public on all three of those. So if we could come out of that meeting with.
With the next, the layout of it.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I'm willing to have input on that, although, as you heard, we all, we have a consensus generally that we want, we want to create a new entity, because I think it's in the, my feeling is, having been involved, and this is not as long as you, but close, that, first is good, but we'll move from there.
We also know that consensus can change as soon as the public speaks.
I think one thing we would probably put on here too, you talked a little bit about revising the tourism strategic plan, you know? Is that something that, that we do? Or I guess to think about is, you know, if we spin up this entity, are they part of that process?
They would be part of that.
Oh, for sure.
You're just, yeah, they're part of that process.
Okay, so we're not gonna just go do that then, right now?
Well, part of that is, you need the data in that, that document to be updated. There's a, that doesn't involve getting input from people, it's, it's statistics and stuff. I have mine at home, and there's a lot of things in there that are outdated, that need to be updated, because this is now two thousand twenty-four, and when we did that, it was two thousand seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. And the metrics have changed, we know that.
Well, I look at step four and those categories. Something near, dear to my heart, and I want to know where it fits in here. Where does commercial marine traffic linked to ground-based tours fit in those categories? Or does have to be enumerated separately?
Leave that outdoor recreational business interest.
I think it's, I think it's separate from specific, and I think it ought to be listed there as a bullet point.
I'd like you to hone it down so it's more general, a little more general topic than, I mean, a statement than saying this, this, if you're, you're boxing it in a little bit. So these are all very general categories, which is, which is good.
On commercial marine traffic?
That sounds good to me. It's not saying who, what.
We can combine that then with these others.
I mean, that, that brings in a lot of other pieces too.
Okay, commercial marine traffic.
So it doesn't.
We want to take advantage of that river asset.
Yeah. Okay. Or river, you know?
Yeah, river usage.
Whatever, yeah, perfect. Okay, all right, let's take, uh, let's adjourn this, uh, to, look at the clock. Okay. We are back in session. Uh, we are now moving on to the next agenda item, which is back to the top of the pops, right?
Chinese menu choices.
One from column A, one from column B.
I'd like it.
So let's go to item number two, which is climate-friendly and equitable communities, which has got a really weird acronym, which I don't want to say, because it sounds like a bad word, parking reforms.
And no one wanted to stick around for this one, apparently.
It's so exciting.
Not quite in this much interest.
Are you leaving?
Fine.
Fine. Soon as our backs are turned, he's out the door.
Yeah.
So, um, good evening, uh, for our listeners out there, I'm the Quillahard Ravitch, the Community Development Director, with Pete Walter, our planning manager, and, um, I know that my colleagues behind me are gonna sit through and listen to this entire presentation.
You know, there is such a thing as quid pro quo.
That's right.
You can, you can write this down for, you know, a later sort of, uh, payback.
Yeah, it's in the I O U. So, um, I have a presentation, let's see, and so that's pulled up on your iPads, I'm guessing? Can you see that, or no? Anyway, it's on the screen, okay. Um, so the, the point of tonight, and, uh, it, it, so we, we do call it C F E C. I understand that doesn't quite roll off the, the topic, but.
That only has Tony ten times, what are you talking?
Climate-friendly and equitable communities, and it, it's a set of Oregon administrative rules, and it actually took me quite a while to digest it all. And so I wanted to start with, uh, uh, just a work session, um, for you all, so that you could just start digesting a little bit before we actually ask for any direction. So that's what we're doing tonight, is just, um, presenting some information, and, um, we'll have several discussions to come after that. And, um, there's a lot to cover, but, um, the good news is that you don't need to make a decision tonight. So what is C F E, um, what is climate-friendly and equitable communities? Um, it came out of an executive order from, uh, the governor in two thousand twenty. It was part of the Oregon State Climate Action Plan, and it directed many state agencies to take significant actions to mitigate the effects of climate change. So, um, the Department of Land Use and Conservation and the Land Use and Conservation Development Commission adopted some administrative rules that are aimed at reducing climate pollution and providing more transportation and housing options, um, along with promoting equitable land use planning outcomes. So the rules require us to adopt climate-friendly areas, support electric vehicles, reduce parking mandates, and address critical gaps in walking, biking, and transit. And, oh, I had a, a beautiful little animation, but it, um, since we're in PDF, it's, it didn't work. But that's okay, that's all right. Um, so these are the major tasks, the major implementation requirements. So the first piece, that climate-friendly, uh, study areas, um, we meet that because we adopted our regional center through Metro's two thousand forty program. We adopted that a long time ago, probably.
Is there ever an opportunity to revisit that, just as a question?
Uh, that, that is, um, your prerogative is the city commission.
I should ask, I'll ask, I'll ask Councilor Lewis.
Um, so, so that piece, electrical vehicle, uh, conduit, um, parking minimums, parking maximums, and other reforms, um, the green box is basically what we're gonna be focusing on, and that, with this set of reforms. So over the next year, um, there's gonna be new rules that have to be part of the transportation system plan, which will start in two thousand twenty-five, and then, uh, there's going to be a kind of a new way to do a housing needs analysis, which they also call a housing capacity analysis. Uh, but that's not due until two thousand twenty-seven, so we're just focusing on the items in the green box. And so we've got, we kind of broke this out into five different sets of reforms, the parking minimums, maximums, electrical vehicle charging, and parking design, um, and bicycle parking. And ultimately, the ultimate outcome is that we'll make amendments to our code that comply with the administrative rules. Okay, so this is where we get into the choices, the decisions, um, how, how you put this together. So the first reform is the parking minimums, and this is the, the first decision that you'll need to consider, kind of influences the other policy choices, and that decision is whether or not to eliminate, uh, minimum parking requirements throughout the city. Um, that sounds like a big task, it sounds a little bit daunting, but, um, it ends up being not a huge, um, relatively small portion of the city. So I'll get through all of these different reforms, and then we'll kind of look at the map and talk about what, what actually is left, um, to regulate.
Why do you say it's a relatively small part of the city?
Well.
Within the bus line, right?
Yeah, so that, that's what I wanted to get to.
Oh, okay.
Um, but if you, if you want, I can skip ahead, and we can answer that question now, if that's helpful. Oh, okay, I'll keep going.
Yeah, no, see, part of what is, is troubling me about this whole thing, it's transportation dependent. And as was said on the Saturday hearing that I attended, the service here sucks. We have no control over it, so we're gonna make all of these things, and people still can't use transit. It's, it's, to me, it's like the cart before the horse. And TriMet then says, well, we're not gonna increase, increase any service until we have ridership. Well, we can't increase ridership until we have service, so it, I, I feel like we've been talking about around this for twenty years plus. It's like, I, I, I can't get my head around it. It is so transportation dependent on, on transit.
And, and these, uh, this, um, what we're talking about tonight doesn't have a lot to do with transit or, or increasing densities to, to make the ridership. Um, but, a, and then the other thing that I think is just important to remember is that a developer can still build parking, um, based on what the market demands, but we can't require necessarily a, a minimum amount. So, um, so I, kind of getting back to your first question, so these, these pieces that are in category one, um, the no minimum parking, that is already in effect. The, the state already requires that we do not require minimum parking i- in these areas in half of, within half a mile of a Tri. and half of, within half a mile of a TriMet, uh, frequent transit line for the small housing units and affordable housing, childcare facilities and these other, um, categories. And then, um, we actually already comply with some of them. So we already, um, had, had changed the code, I think through the equitable housing work in maybe middle.
In the middle.
In middle housing, where we only require one space per, per unit. So we're, we had already, already, um, complied with that. And then what we'll need to do is just update our code so that we're consistent, um, in the way we implement it. So we don't have people who are applying for applications and our code says one thing and the state code says another and we're having to kind of go back and forth. Um, so if we decide not to eliminate parking minimums, then we have these other decisions to choose to go through. And th- this is why it gets a little bit confusing. Um, so we have to do, um, A and B. So we would have to reduce mandates, so, so the state calls it mandates, I'm calling them minimums. So I'm just going to say minimums. We would have to reduce minimums based on that list of items. And they have some very specific ways to do that in the OARs. So, uh, based on shared parking, solar panels, EV charging, car sharing, parking space accessibility, on-street parking, garage parking. If a development, um, provides those things, then they basically, it's kind of like a one for one. Um, less parking for doing one of those things. Um, and then we won't be able to require garages or carports. Um, so then we come to our second decision, which is how we want to regulate parking within the regional center. And for us, our regional center is essentially downtown, kind of covers all of downtown. So we either remove all the parking minimums within a, um, within the regional center and a quarter mile or, uh, create a parking district with paid on-street parking, um, the, those other items, which we kind of already have that in place. Um, so then we come to decision three and we have to choose between, uh, the top set or the bottom set. And, uh, the, the top set is really, there are items that are not land use. Um, and become, I think, um, very burdensome to administer. I'm not sure who does that, but, um, somehow we would require that someone who, uh, that a landlord that rents out apartments charges a separate lease for their parking. And same with commercial, um, put a tax on commercial parking lots, uh, reduce minimum parking requirements for new multifamily. Um, so we would have to choose a couple of those. The, the second. Hard to.
I see the eyes rolling.
It's hard to swallow, but just, just stick with me. Um, so the second option is, um, those things are more land use related, where, um, we, we can't mandate like certain uses. Um, uh, the no additional parking for changes in use. So, you know, you go from an office to a restaurant that requires more parking usually, but we wouldn't be able to require, um, more parking for that. And then, uh, let's see, no mandates within half mile walking distance of the regional center and designate on-street paid parking, um, or unbundle parking. So those ones we can control a little bit easier. So the, these are the, if we don't eliminate all minimum parking, then we have to go through and make decision two and decision three. Okay, so that's minimum parking. So, um, regardless of what we do with minimum parking, then we have, um, to look at our electric vehicle charging. And this is another one that's already in place right now that, um, we're implementing. Um, but it would be good to have this in our code so that it's consistent with whatever the state's doing. So it's, uh, requiring a new buildings with five or more parking units to provide just the conduit for forty percent of the parking spaces. So it makes them EV capable, I think is.
Is it small but.
Uh, yes, yeah, yeah, that ends up being multifamily. Um, and right now, the, the state building code actually already is requiring, uh, the non-residential uses to provide twenty percent EV capable. We can require more than that if, if we like.
Was, was that rule not in effect when we built this building and the public's work, public works building?
Yeah.
Remember I asked that question?
Yeah.
I asked the question when we were, we were acquiring First Street.
Okay, so should a developer choose to build parking, then there's some maximums that they have to comply with. Um, most of these are, are, um, only applicable in our regional center. Um, we have parking maximums already, but we would have to make a, um, some minor amendments to make, make our code kind of meet these other requirements. So the residential uses within half mile of a frequent bus line, um, maximums, if set at five spaces per thousand square feet of floor space. So basically that's saying we can't require like seven spaces per thousand, um, square feet. We have to, that would be, a- and we're already complying with that. Um, this other one, I don't know would necessarily be applicable to us. Uses larger than sixty-five thousand square feet, can't have parking lots larger than the building. I believe that still is only in the regional center and so we're not really going to see that type of a large building, um, where they can't have, um, more parking spaces than that. Okay, and then there's design. Um, so here, um, we would be looking for carpool and van pool when there's fifty or more spaces. Um, bike parking, um, we have to allow the, the redevelopment of larger, of some parking areas for bike or transit uses, um, encourage redevelopment of underused parking. I, I think, I'm not sure what encourage means, but encourage redevelopment of that. Allow, facilitate shared parking, which we do now, but we have some restrictions that we'd have to kind of take out. Um, and then this one is require new and redeveloped parking areas um, that are greater than one half acre to install forty percent tree canopy or solar panels or P F E N L U. Um, and then if there's a parking area that's more than a half acre to provide trees and pedestrian connections.
These all proposed to be new or this applies to parking that we already have?
Yeah, it's new or like, um, redeveloped, but it's not retroactive, basically. Uh, and then there's bicycle parking reforms, um, that we'd have to make as well. So, um, this is a kind of increase in the number of spaces per unit. Um, acquiring bike parking for the, the new retail office institutional, so we comply with that. If we require off-street parking, then we have to provide, we have to require bike parking. And there's certain design standards around the bike parking. Um, and then in the regional center, we have to provide bike parking and parking for shared bikes. And it says small scale mobility devices. I think that means like scooters, like there's some cities that have these scooter programs. We don't need to provide the scooter, just a place to park it.
Forty percent tree canopy look like on a twenty-two thousand square foot lot?
That's a good question.
Yeah, it's not based on numbers of trees. They're talking about canopy, so they're, you have to, um, require a landscape architect to tell us that the trees that they're putting in these new parking lots are going to achieve a certain canopy size at a certain time.
I know, just under eighty-eight hundred square foot of coverage.
Yeah.
By tree canopy, um, twenty-two, you say twenty-two thousand?
Yeah, that's, that's, that just breaks the half acre threshold.
Yeah, that's right.
And I'm assuming that's at maturity?
Yeah, I would assume so.
So you're going to have an arborist sit there and say, we're going to plant a, some type of a maple and at maturity, it's typically got a twenty-five foot diameter.
Right.
They're going to do.
Right.
Twenty-five times.
Yep, right.
For the area to, to get to eighty-eight hundred square feet. I imagine that's how it's going to be. It's going to be a mathematical exercise on a site plan.
Yeah.
A lot of effective parking places as well.
You know, we have land, we have parking lot landscaping requirements now.
We do.
Like I think, for example, don't we have to put in a tree?
Yeah. Yeah.
I just don't know, we haven't done the, what that looks like compared to what we require today. Like, right, it'd be one thing if we didn't require anything, like if you could just come in and pave it a hundred percent.
Sure.
Right, that'd be a big difference. Right now, we do require trees landscaping, you know, trying to get folks to use bioswells as a preferred method before they go to underground attention. So I think it's going to be an exercise of saying, okay, what do we have now? And what would it take to get to forty percent? What do, I, I, I don't know that we're going to be that far off.
I don't think so.
But just because we do have landscaping requirements already that include tree canopy.
The ironic part is that concurrent to this conversation, there is the governor's Housing Production Advisory Council, who is simultaneously recommending to remove tree codes in order just per housing development. So, uh, we're going to have to make sure once those codes are adopted or rules are adopted that we're able to thread the needle. And, uh, in fact, maybe this proposal changes because of that.
Well, I, I will say right now, I, I am not going to support any removal of trees to build more housing because that completely goes against climate change. I mean, it seems like the two things are conflicting with each other.
Yeah.
Not seems, they are conflicting.
We, we have heard that.
That's something they're still considering though.
Yes, they've recently released their drafts.
That's one of the things that fell apart on the last day.
So I'm going to say, no way.
Didn't get passed.
That one is different. That one was related to the urban growth batteries.
Oh, okay.
Um, so this is what some of the other cities are doing. Most, most cities are, uh, just doing away with the minimums, um, because of that, um, matrix, matrix of choices and, um, it kind of overburdens some way of actually administering a parking code if you don't just get rid of the, the minimums. Um.
Or require putting in papers and working out.
Sure, right.
We already have papers.
I know, saying that, that's a work, you know, we're going to go in, in, in.
Right.
Require meters, right, per jurisdiction.
That's a big lift, yeah, so for sure.
And I asked some very specific questions. I saw on some of those lists, now, I realize not everybody's had to deal with daycare, but to eliminate parking for daycare facilities, when, I mean, have you ever been to a daycare facility when all the parents are dropping kids off? It's, you're talking a frickin nightmare. And if there's nowhere for them to park and drop the kids off, I mean, that, you know, somebody is obviously not thinking.
That's because the parents are supposed to be walking home from Portland.
Are they? Yes, thank you for that, because that's exactly, that, that's, that's not going to happen here.
Biking, right?
I see them sometimes when I'm over at Fat Cupcake, when they're trying to pick up kids at that. I don't even know why that is even in there. That is, that is a parking nightmare. I never park in there when I know it's time for them to be letting the kids out. It's crazy. It's on, in Malala Avenue, it's in that corner. It's like, whoa.
Yeah, there are certain land uses like that and they're calling those equity uses, you know. And so they're saying that it's burdensome to require minimum parking for those types of uses. That's part of it, but at the same time.
And the parents are going, oh, my God, you know? And then you.
What's, what's interesting though, it'll be interesting to see how much the market drives this because.
Right, yeah.
I'm not sure if I'm going to build, um, a restaurant and I don't have park. I, it'd just be interesting to see what the loan terms would be like if you don't have the ability to park a space. Right, and the same on residential, like folks, we're not downtown Portland where you can get away with, you know, building a no parking apartment complex.
Um, well, are they really getting away with it? I mean.
Well, I mean, I, I'm just saying, it'd be interesting to see whether both the market as well as the lending environment dictates some type of a minimum. Would not shock me in the suburban based landscape that we are. You know, as well as multiple jurisdictions around the metro region. I think that's part of the concern with this is, is there's this one size fits all and it.
Yeah, and that's what we've been saying. Because I mean, I, I will say honestly, I don't think we want our neighborhoods turning into Hawthorne Boulevard. It, there's a livability issue there, there's also a safety issue. I mean, when you talk about eliminating parking and you've got pedestrians and they're coming in between cars and you can't, I mean, you're just, it's, you're asking for a lot of issues that are unintended consequences because you've done that.
I agree, but.
We had one of our Yak members mention it, parking on Myers Road.
This, this map is really eye opening.
Well, that map is frightening.
How little of the city will we be able to require any parking minimum? And the fact is not very much. South End, um, up towards College and Thimble Creek, but, I mean.
It's all, it's all commercial cores. We, right, yeah.
I mean, the good part is that a lot of that's built out.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, you know, it misses Thimble Creek, you know, right now in terms of being able to address that.
A lot of South End.
Yep.
There is a lot of parking existing as well, so.
True, true. So on this map, what, so what happens, this is kind of a multi-part question. What happens if TriMet changes the route?
Yeah, I know.
Or they add, or they add another route that's every fifteen minutes?
Oh, to the High College.
Well, we, so there is a.
Is that, so has that zone become a moving target?
It, there's a, an allowance, um, i- i- in the rules where you can, not, not this, I, I don't necessarily think this is that much better, but you can adopt a new map like once a year because, because they do change. And this map is actually showing a new TriMet line. Because right now, the TriMet line goes up, the frequent transit line goes up Lynn and then, uh, hooks over on, on Warner Millie to, uh, Cleckhamus Community College. And so this is their proposed, um, change where it's going to go up Seventh and Malala hook around through Red Soils and then come out to the community college. Um, so it doesn't change a whole lot, it doesn't change the buffer a whole lot. The other thing that's in here is that, uh, which I didn't, uh, label, but Jacob, I don't know if you're able to mouse over, but there's a, the regional center buffer is in the middle there. So kind of keep going, um, towards like, no, that's the city buffer, like towards the.
It's the darker black line around the downtown.
Yeah. There you go, yeah, that's it, yeah. So that pushes the buffer out also. So in order to comply with some of the, the, the other, um, uh, requirements, you know, that pushes that, that whole buffer out. So it, it leaves, you know, the, the park place, um, neighborhood area, um, up off of Holcomb and then like South End. And basically what it leaves are, are low and medium density residential, which we already don't regulate. And, and then this stuff in, in Thimble Creek.
Can we do West Lynn too?
Yeah, we're, yeah, we're taking in Glassdough. What about, where the, where about Glassdough? Got the Walgreens and all that over there? We need to get through some minimum parking.
So that's, that's kind of where, where I've left it. These are the policy considerations, so this is what we'll bring back at the next meeting. Um, for, for you to make a decision.
Well, sure, the seventeenth, right?
Yeah, yep, yeah. Um, you know, should we repeal all the parking minimums? Um, should the city require more than twenty percent EV charging for our commercial projects? What kind of public outreach do we want to engage in? Which I, I think is a little bit of a tough question because I, you know, I don't normally advise that we ask the public for feedback that we can't use. So I, I don't know. So we need to just kind of weigh like, you know, what level of public outreach are we going to do?
Public outrage. It's going to be public outrage.
Well, yeah. Or, or maybe a better term is like, in, public information, just putting, public education, right, of what, what this is rather than like, what do you want to see? Um, and then my other question is if you want to get some of that feedback before making a, any of these policy decisions. Um, so that, that's what we'll come back with. Um, this is the timeline. We do want to, um, apply for a grant, but, uh, D, DLCD has some funding, um, to help cities. And so, we would apply to, to use the funding for a consultant who could, could help with some level of public, um, education, public engagement, and drafting code. That grant application's coming up. So, part of what's on your agenda for next week is a resolution, just supporting the grant application. Um, and then we would envision that our spring is spent working on that engagement, and, um, um, getting, just getting dialed in, the consultant contract, and then, uh, through the summer, working on the draft code language. Fall, the legislative hearings, and then hopefully an adoption by the, uh, end of the year. Um, right now, we only have an extension to have this done until June. I just applied for another extension through, uh, December. And I'm fairly confident that they will give us that extension. They're basically just looking for some type of momentum, some type of movement, so.
So, as I asked you offline, where does the lawsuit figure in this? What we're in the lawsuit for is what we ask for more time, not just extensions.
Um, I don't know. So, the, the, there was, uh, a hearing in July at the Court of Appeals, and we have not heard any status on their decision. Um, I asked Carrie that last night, there's been no word. Apparently, there was a more recent decision on a different case, and, um, it was Northwest Natural versus, uh, the commission that, that regulates DQ. It's, um, I think Environmental Quality Commission, and.
And that's, that's Washington there, that's what they're called, ours is just.
No, this, it was here in Oregon, it was part, kind of part of the, um, that larger climate action.
I mean, eliminating gas appliances, stuff that.
No, it was, it was for, I, I shouldn't even speak about this because Carrie could give the details, but it was for these larger companies that are, are, um, producing pollution.
Yeah, but it was largely thrown out on procedural grounds and not necessarily that they can't do it.
On the sides of the case, yeah, okay.
Right. So, Carrie's thought is perhaps that will influence the, uh, Court of Appeals on this decision. But there's been no word. Um, so, we kind of have to move forward. I, on that slide with, uh, the cities who, who have eliminated parking, one of them is the city of Springfield, and they're kind of the lead in, in the legal action that we're part of. Their, the thought there is that they'll just go back and change back the code, right? If, or change their code depending on how that, how that, uh, court decision comes out. Um, so the, kind of already talked about this, this is our next steps. We'll be back next week, um, and clear out the audience again, I'm sure.
And I assure you, if you send information to the neighborhood associations about parking.
Oh, it'll be a big audience, yeah.
They'll be here.
Um, yeah, so submit the grant application, then we would come back in, in the spring. And that is, that is C-FIC. All right, happy to answer any questions that we can.
All right, let's move on, since it's such an exciting topic.
So, I either bring all of the, all of the, you know, people to the commission chambers or none of them, depending on my topic.
We'll change.
Yeah, as you say, you're giving out free money, we'll see how, how it goes.
So, go back to the list of future work session items?
Yep.
Can we just go over that?
Sort of. Yeah.
We did the last meeting, we eliminated a bunch of stuff.
We, okay, yeah, well, I just updated that. So, February, we're bringing the TriMet Transit Center improvements and the facilities master plan discussion back. And then, uh, updated the additional upcoming items to reflect the discussion from, uh, the meeting, uh, the first meeting in January. Okay? And I will jump to commission project update. Um. Really, there's just been the quiet zone. Um, we're reviewing the, the ODOT scope of work and consultant procurement documents, um, and providing comments. Um, remember, ODOT is the project manager on this program because of the federal funding. Um, they're looking at a six-month, uh, timeline for the consultant procurement and two years for the design work, um, which will include coordination, the railroad operation and maintenance agreements, and review by the railroad.
They don't have anybody.
How much more will the cost go back to?
To say, we were ready to hire somebody, it's gonna take six months to hire somebody, we could do it in thirty days.
I would.
Good lord.
So, we're continuing to push ODOT, um, to try to expedite those timelines.
Yeah.
Uh, charter parks, uh, we did a tour of the Glaughlin Promenade to have a look at, um, kind of put some real-life examples to the surveys that we were looking at. Um, we'll be bringing that back for a discussion. Um, right now, one of the main methods that we're looking at from the staff standpoint is to treat, um, the encroachments in the promenade similar to, um, a long-term encroachment in the right-of-way. Um, so we'll, we're looking into how that would function, how that would work for discussion to see if that's the appropriate avenue to address these, or if there's going to be, uh, requests for, um, a little bit of a different approach on a case-by-case basis.
When are you planning on doing the one-on-ones with these people?
I, I don't have a calendar, I, we will have to put something together.
Again, I was thinking of the, I won't specifically identify it, but the person obviously is planning to do some work, and it seems to me that we need to reach out to them and say, do not put these pavers down or whatever, it's not your property. I mean, in a nice way, of course. Because I don't, I don't want somebody to come in and say, oh, well, nobody told me, blah, 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 and we saw it. So, I mean, it's, I, I just don't wanna be throwing good money after bad. They, they need to be somehow contacted and.
Well, maybe if we make our approach known, that'll answer the questions for those people before they take any action. I mean, the approach we're leaning towards, you know, it could be revoked at any time. Do you really wanna do that, knowing that?
Right, yeah, I agree, I, I just think we.
It's an easier solution than.
We saw something, and it's, I don't want us to delay informing that, that party in particular.
Okay, we can, um, I'll work with staff to, to kind of come up with a timeline to start engaging the ones that we've identified. If the, I guess I'm not hearing a hard no of like, we want everything taken out, right? Because that's a completely different, different discussion.
Well, there were some that I definitely, we talked about the, the, the fire pits. That, that, to me, that's, that's a hazard, and that's a liability for the city. So, I don't think we should be allowing anybody to put their personal fireplace or whatever it is in the park area. It just, to me, it's a risk.
Now, that, all those decisions will be the will of the commission. You'll have to run it by everybody and see how it falls.
Okay, but I guess I'm, I'm hearing that the, the option of utilizing kind of an easement approach seems acceptable to start.
It's a starting.
Because, I mean, that's a very, very different conversation with people, that you gotta get everything out.
Well, some of it is crap, they need to get it out.
You can do an easement approach with specific things that you cannot do within those easements.
And then we can have that discussion about what those restrictions might be.
Or all your used cardboard or your.
The responsibilities that come with a, a easement.
Okay. Um, Caughes Five Memorial, the final construction bid documents, uh, the tribute has been completed. Um, the bid advertisement's out. We hope to have the contract awarded first meeting in February, and I'll slip to the second. Then we'll have pre-construction meetings and begin, and begin construction. So, that, that project's moving forward. Um, and, you know, like, I, the courthouse, I've received a lot of questions from both Riddoka representatives, Chamber of Commerce, you know, what's going on with the courthouse downtown, realizing that the county's timeline is May of twenty-five. Um, I, I know you've had conversations with Chair Smith. I, I think trying to get the county to engage on what they want to do with their property as well as get an understanding, because it's not ju, my understanding, and this is where any clarification is, it's not just the courthouse, right? There are DA's that are renting space down there. Um, you know, trying to get a comprehensive understanding of what's moving and what are you planning to do with the properties that you own? Um, what do we, what position do we wanna have? And then, I'm leery to have the discussion about what position we have without knowing what the county's actual plan or intentions are. But, you know, I guess, I know you meet monthly.
Well, we haven't met lately, but she knows.
Or, or on the Click the Mayor's meeting that's held.
She's still, is still on my radar. When I chatted with her again recently, um, I said, we need to get back into discussion about the courthouse. There's two issues with the courthouse. There's the courthouse itself, and then there's Liberty Plaza, so.
At minimum, we need to really focus on.
Yeah.
Isn't there that annex where they, the jury meets sometimes? Isn't that a separate building?
Oh, that's a common building, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we need to get ahead of that, and our economic development needs to be aware of that so that we don't end up with another social service.
Well, that, yeah, and that we don't, you know, we don't want the building to be sitting, we don't want either building to be sitting there vacant while, you know, Rome burns, so to speak. And I guess what I would suggest is that maybe we talk to Gary Schmidt about the best way to re, bring this back up with them again. Uh, he's the county administrator, and see if we can get some discussion. Because I, I can tell you, it, it was so ironic when they were applying for something and it got turned down. And I said, well, you turned us down on the grant. Alls we wanted you to, was to sign it, we weren't obligating you to anything. We just wanted you to sign it as the property owner.
So, I'm feeling a little, you know, if you have conversations with county commissioners, it would be nice to broach that subject. We can reach out to staff level as well.
Getting some sort of control over whether it be, you know, mi, you know, minimal, so that we could help guide what happens there. I know he's supportive of it, I know Martha would be.
Of who getting control of it?
Well, that, we have, whatever they do, let Oregon City take the lead on looking at what the redevelopment is, not, not them. Because they don't, they don't wanna do anything. And I know there's at least a couple of them that said, yes, the Oregon City should be looking at the courthouse. It's the other three that, you know, and Tootie did say yes in, to my face, and then at the hearing, she said no. So.
Okay. Um, then Tamwata Village and Kanema right away, I don't have any updates at this point.
Gee, I just talked, we just chatted again, I talked to Station, she says, oh, we're so close. I just thought I'd say nevermind. We just can't wait to get in front of you guys to show you what our plans are. And I thought, yeah, okay, still waiting.
Got some of the updates that I have.
Well, I know that most of our committees have not been meeting because this is the first part of the month, so our assignment, um, so I don't think we have much to report. South Ward doesn't meet till the end of the month.
The only thing I will say is I immediately followed up after that last meeting with a question on those vacations of, and, uh, sent something to Wyatt, and he's in contact with John. And then we should be able to deal with that on our meeting on the twenty-fourth, and then get back to the city as to what they wanna do.
We are trying to get scheduled a, uh, a meeting to talk about the CEO's work plan and what our work plan's going to be. There'll also be elections, because we do the switch.
Oh, that's right, yep.
Be West Lynn.
Um, I'm sorry.
That's pretty much it for South Ward. None of your groups have met?
Um, no, uh, Cleckhamus Heritage Partners met before the holidays and started having a minimal conversation about the facility's plan because of the meeting that, um, CHP had with Parks. Um, so I assume, um, at our next meeting, I will probably bring that up again just so that Cleckhamus Heritage Partners is, you know, aware of, which they already are about this facility's process, but also, you know, if and when that building becomes something different, what, you know, what is their feelings about? I think that's something they need to start thinking about in their vision and future, and, um, to be a part of that dialogue as the, um, facility stuff goes forward.
I think it would be helpful when we get to that building again, that we have them here to talk about it.
For sure, at some point, yeah.
At some, I mean, I don't know when, but when, you know.
And I, I mean, I know the pub, I know the Parks Department's meeting with them to give them, you know, here's where we're at at this point. So, I think they're, they're up to speed with where we're at now. But as that conversation starts narrowing into what buildings or what facilities might be used in what way, they need to make sure they know what their mission in, in future is.
Right.
At that point to know, if we do rebuild a building, how does that fit to that?
Yeah, I just think we need to have a conversation with some of the board members, not, not just Dan all the time.
No, absolutely.
And I think, you know, when we've been talking about it with the consulting team based on the last work session, you know, I can envision as part of this facility's master plan, that something like the EOT or the pool, like, the natural stopping point of this current process might be, you know, we wanna have a more robust public engagement process for what and where the pool becomes, right? So, I don't think through this process, we're gonna answer, you know, the pool is gonna be, you know, to a lap pool, a competitive pool, a rec center, and it's gonna be located on this property, right? So, I guess I just wanna put that out there, that I think a natural point is, you know, we, we address, we, we acknowledge that the pool is ending its, uh, uh, end of term life, and that we need to do a public engagement process that says, where does this go? Or, we know it's at the end of the life and we want a new pool, right? I, that's gonna be for you all, and I think the same's gonna happen with EOT, right? It's gonna be, we're not gonna get to what that site becomes through this process. I think it is, yes, we need to address this, and we have the public enga, I heard this desire for a, a more robust public engagement process about what these facilities become, okay?
Hey, Adam, um, obviously, CIC didn't meet because it was New Year's Day, but you could talk about the transportation stuff.
Yes, so, um.
Please.
Uh, so we had our Oregon City West Lynn Gladstone, uh, public hearing from the Legislative Subcommittee on Saturday, the sixth. Uh, it was a great turnout at Gladstone High School, and, uh, I'm grateful to, one, uh, the mayor for giving her invited testimony, but also for, uh, Commissioners Smith and Mitchell, who both, like me, showed up an hour early, uh, to, to make sure, um.
Good seats.
To make sure, one, to get good seats, but also, uh, because, uh, by the time that the two hours was over for public comment, there were still two sheets left of people who weren't able to speak. And so, it was important for us to get there early, uh, so we would have an opportunity to actually say something. And so, I, I thought that went really well. Uh, tomorrow, that same Legislative Subcommittee is meeting, um, and they are going to have a presentation from ODOT, um, as well as having a, an opportunity for public comment from non-metro area residents. Um, and so, that'll be interesting to watch. And then I think there will be a general debrief of what they've heard. And this is kind of the true test, I think, of whether this committee is actually gonna mean something, uh, or whether it's just a show to.
Lib service.
To, yeah, lib service. And so, uh, I will be at that meeting, and I will be eager to report back to you all. Um, big shout-out to our city staff, uh, who has done a lot of work, and our public works department specifically, who have done a lot of work helping prepare us, and also to county staff, who has done a good job coordinating the county elected officials to have a consistent message. So, um, that, preparing for that has been our, our big thing, and now trying to figure out what comes out of that, if anything, is, is the, uh, big focus.
I've had a lot of community comment as to whether or not I thought something would come of it. And I basically have said that, um, I'm always hopeful. I said, because if nothing comes out of it, people are gonna burn something to the ground. I mean, people are fed up. So, I, I hope it happens. Wanna talk about, uh, our meeting last night?
Yeah, so we had a youth advisory commission meeting, and, um, we had a great presentation from John Lewis. And, um, yes, and he gave us a, a short PowerPoint presentation, I think. Um, and I was really impressed with the questions, uh, that were posed by the students. But he was talking about the Safe Routes to School, uh, grant that we were successfully awarded because the students had expressed understandably, because this is central to their lives, uh, safety in, in getting to school, specifically for pedestrians and bikers and whatnot. And so, um, while our ability to, to have that be a project of theirs may be limited, uh, at least getting that base level of. at least getting that base level of knowledge on how things work was a good primer and a great way to start as we begin thinking of ways that we may want to tackle this issue.
The other things, John, let them know about which roads are within our jurisdiction and our scope of putting sidewalks in them, which ones aren't. And a lot of roads around the school are pretty much all county roads.
Yep.
So that was unfortunate. Urban Growth Management Committee.
meets Friday.
Friday, okay, so coming up.
And C4 Metro meets next week.
I have a meeting tomorrow with Wes. And I can't remember whether it's Zoom or in person, so I'll figure that out. My other committees don't meet till the end of the month. So we have a work session coming up, a retreat for Lamont Falls Heritage and Landings, Lamont Falls and Landings Heritage Area Coalition, that's on the twenty-second. There is a fundraiser event on the twenty-first. It's going to be hard hats and hot dogs at the old West Lynn City Hall. So.
What day is that? Remind me?
It's the Sunday.
It's the Sunday, okay.
Not the Sunday, a Sunday, the twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
Yeah, coming, coming up.
I saw that and I want to put that down.
So I will be there probably doing something. I don't know exactly what, but maybe hot dogs or something. So that's coming up. And then like I said, our work, our goal-setting session is the, the next day. Locks of the Rory doesn't meet till the end of the month as well. South Ward doesn't meet till the end of the month. And Impact doesn't meet till the end of the month. Metropolitan Mayor's Committee, again, doesn't meet till the end of the month. But our goals there are to set an agenda for the next coming year. They're looking at reappointing some members. I made a suggestion that maybe Mayor Callaway, who's term limited out, and Mayor Stovall maybe not be on the executive committee of the group because they're the ones that have basically poo-pooed him, our group, from making a strong statement about I-205 tolling. They're both on J-PAC and they're looking at federal money for their projects in Washington County and East Multnomah. So I got told, well, Joe Buck's on there. Yeah, but Joe Buck's only one person and there's two of them. So we'll see how that, how that voting goes. The other thing is, again, setting the legislative agenda for the group. And I think some of that has to be coordinated with the League of Oregon Cities. And I think in terms of some of the land use stuff, I don't think that the league staff has been strong enough because they're basically saying some of the bills like thirty-four fourteen revisited, well, this is good enough. Well, you're not the ones having to carry the water on that at the local level. So there'll be some more discussion. So that's, that's all I have. But I do want to say that, again, like you said, thank you to the transportations, our public work staff for helping us with the, all the things that deal with this I-205. I can't believe we've been at this for five and a half, almost six years without a good resolution. And it's just, well, there are days I just get very discouraged about it because I don't really see that there's forward movement. And it basically reinforces what people think about government. And, you know, we're trying to set, you know, a better tone than some of those folks. So, and I, I know there's somebody else that I probably need to thank, but I can't think of it right now because it's been a long day.
I was going to say, feel free to mention in passing while you're at Wes that one of your militant commissioners wants to withhold their monies and put it in escrow till we get.
And believe it or not, it's not Rocky Smith, although I'm willing to support it.
We might be having elections and I'm going to bring up the fact that I think one of the cities needs to be on the, either president or vice chair.
No doubt.
And not, not the, not the rule for, I mean, the rule.
Good luck with that.
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to go for it. I'm going to try it. I'm going to bring it up.
Good luck.
Well, I, thank you. I need the luck.
That'll be a massive victory if you could pull that off.
Well, we haven't really been in that position. I don't even know the last time we've actually.
And there's a reason.
Yeah, well, I'm just telling you. I'm going to try.
All right.
So anything else? Okay, let's adjourn.
Thanks.